Wendy.
Here.
Kristen.
Here.
David G.
Yeah.
Annie.
Here.
Tyler.
Yeah.
Christine. Is she online by any chance? Welcome online. Uh, Leslie.
Here.
Patricia.
Here.
Rebecca.
Here.
Dawn.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Kelsey.
Here.
Uh, David G.
Here.
Um, Abigail Allen has a hockey match today and Wyatt doesn't look like he's online either. So, uh, folks, um, that means we can actually do, um, votes by show. Nobody online.
Student representative reports. See an honorary.
Royal River is jumping into the second semester of classes about their future. In the real world, they are learning about paychecks and taxes. Later this week, they will get jobs and begin to budget time in month. In D N A, they are learning about the building blocks of life and are about to be taught in class. Finally, in futuristic pathways, Royal is focused on inflation. He will be further exploring how to save throughout history and life models. Um, next week, some of the team Royal River is heading to the new cafe to teach about flash fiction. They will work with seniors to create. Short pieces. Um, on Team Oxy Falls, they are in the middle of their amusement park trimester. In science, they are focusing on physics of different rides such as work, energy, and power behind rides. In geography, they are taking a tour around the world and focusing on some of the most famous museums. And what they have to offer as well as the unit on the Nobel. Math is focused on their grade level curriculum. In STEM there, having the students do a trimester long research project. Design and create their own amusement park top to bottom. Reading, writing, they're working on information, texts, and grammar in grammatically correct writing. Uh, Spanish students learn the Spanish language at their level while they go to appreciate cultures and backgrounds. Exploratory Spanish classes are kicking off the new year, learning about Mexican holiday traditions, like las pizarras, los reyes majos, and the delicious sweet bread, la rosca de reyes, that is eaten on January sixth. Year-long Spanish classes are learning about unusual, uh, an unusual tradition in Oaxaca, Mexico called Blanque de la Bamba, the Night of the Rats. Um, in art, art students are continuing their same art, uh, on stage, seeing the different. So like drawing, sports, not shading, blending with a graphite pencil, which is important. In health, in health, students need to be thoroughly conditioned for paper and class. They're now wrapping up things, um, quickly. Because of the electricity issues, it's a bit difficult to go off stage and help. These high school students are progressing through the math curriculum. Through these workshops, students are participating in the study and book group. Students are reading Hunger Games, Maze Runner, We've Set Dark on Fire, Match, Wild Robot, Life or the Digger. They will be analyzing the genre, character development, and more. In their core classes, they are studying the brain, A I, how we learn, and how we regulate our emotions and reduce stress and anxiety. In tobacco, some of the holiday gifts given to making such as ornaments, a wooden case for a light, a birdhouse. They have been doing investigating reports on holidays and who, what, where, and when of the holidays they took. One of us has had approximately seven hundred documented student visits here at the university. We have emergency bags located in certain rooms that are ready to be taken out with the staff in emergency evacuation situations. They contain birthday cake, meat, snacks, fast food, specials, and et cetera. Vives just are learning about bullying and harassment in Unit Two of Second Step F E L course. One of the extended Vives on Wednesday in January will be dedicated to internet safety lessons for each day. Each day the Vives will meet with the high school staff this month to prepare for assist assisting their Vives with ninth grade course registration process that will take place in February and March. Our high school, middle school mentoring program has eighteen active members. The high school, middle school mentoring program matches trained sophomores, juniors, and seniors in middle school students, mentors, helpers, homework providers in the ear, and engaging fun activities with them.
Thank you for those reports on the great things happening. Uh, did anyone have any questions? Well, that's just gonna go easy tonight. Uh, you can stay or you can head on home and study hard. All right, next up, we have a presentation on the review.
Um, so I'm gonna jump up and do that, um, and, um, Dr. Sharon Smith, um, unfortunately, um, her mother fell, um, last night and was still with eight children. Um, so she was kind of there. I said to help her go do it with family, but I'll do a presentation for you. So I'm gonna do the best I can, um, and share some information with you. But I'll also encourage you guys, if there's anything I don't, um, answer, you have questions, let me know. And, um, Dr. Smith will follow up with answers. I told her I would write down the questions and, um, we're gonna try to go from there. So, you know, I'll jump up and hold you. All right, I'm gonna do a sound check for the people online. That sounds good. Okay, I'll try to not let my voice crack too much as I'm going along here. So for the board members, um, there was, um, a report that's in your folders that matches the presentation and has more information. So again, I'll run through the presentation knowing that I'm filling in for, um, Dr. Smith. Um, and I would encourage you guys to check out the, um, report in more detail after the meeting, um, because some of the stuff may not kind of make sense if you read the report. But I absolutely try to have it match as much as possible going forward, um, with this. There we go. So, um, so first of all, I'll say good evening, um, on behalf of, uh, Dr. Smith. Tonight, um, she was gonna provide an overview of key takeaways from the district's latest assessment report since the last update in September of 2023. Um, this will include a recap of the results from the state assessments in math, reading, and science, as well as fall scores, um, from our N W E A MAP growth, as well as Acadian's benchmarking assessments. So again, there's a lot of information here. So if you think of anything, you have questions, please jot them down as I run through this. And again, I'll try to answer them. If I can't, Dr. Smith will, um, get right back to you, um, with that. So, um, next slide. So to begin with, main state law requires, um, at least a ninety-five percent participation rate on all state assessments. So, um, I'm pleased to share that across all grade levels tested in spring and fall, our district either met or exceeded that ninety-five percent, uh, participation rate, um, in both reading and math, which is very good thing. This allows confidence that our scores genuinely reflect outcomes for essentially all of the students. So in the spring of 2023, math results on the main educational assessment indicate strong outcomes early on with seventy-one percent of our third graders scoring proficient. However, as the chart depicts, math proficiency declined markedly through middle school and high school, whereas seventy-one percent of third graders met expectations, just forty-three percent of tenth graders scored proficient in math based on a twenty-eight percentage point drop. Um, keep in mind, this was the first time that tenth graders actually had to take that test. So it was, it's a benchmark first time, but keep in mind, it is the first time, um, that tenth graders were mandated to take that test. So again, that probably skewed results a little bit. Um, okay, next slide. Um, in reading, the assessment results reveal a very different trend. So as this chart shows, reading proficiency remains quite steady across the grade band, with rates exceeding seventy percent proficient in grades six and eight based on that spring 2023 outcome. This indicates strong reading performance and skills development across into the higher grades. So again, you can see that trend line looks very different than our math score. Um, and you're doing very, very well, um, with reading. And again, remember that was in, um, the spring of 2023. All right, next test, which is also in the spring of 2023, is the main, um, science assessment, which is given to grades five, eighth, and eleven. It says high school, um, on the map, but no, that high school actually means that is grade eleven. So according to the spring results, less than forty percent of students scored proficient across fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade on the 2023 science M E A, although all grades posted higher rates of students above expectations compared to state averages. Um, strengthening science education and competency will be an increasing focus moving forward, um, on these statewide results. Um, but this was not a change. The science test has been the same way, um, for many years now. Um, we just had to kind of report it out a little bit differently. Um, the thing to note though is that we are above, although not greatly above, we are still above the state average there. And, um, that is something to be proud of as the norm in the test. I'm gonna pause for just a second there because I gave you three, four, three pictures. Does anybody have any questions over the spring, Muia or science? And again, you can always give it to me later. I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but certainly have a good slide if it's, uh, if you need. Look on practice probably.
I guess I'll ask the question.
Sure.
On that source, do you know what's causing the decline over time? I mean, I, I, I'm assuming COVID hit it hard.
Yes.
But.
Uh, math is a problem across the state. It's not just us dealing with this. Um, the thing that we have tried to implement is built from the ground up. Um, so we have implemented new math curriculum, and I think that's why we're starting to see, uh, the growth beginning at the lower grade versus it hasn't hit middle school and high school yet. The high school is also implementing a new program, um, which again, it takes a couple of years to see results. But the high school saw this coming early on and started working on implementing last year. So I think we're on the right track. We just, we still have more work to do, obviously. But to say I can pinpoint one.
No, I wasn't looking for a pin. I was looking for just a general.
That's a good, yeah. That's a very good question. Annie, of course. Yes, it was. Yes. Yeah. We met in all grades, which is a really good thing because in the past, we've had a lot of people that have opted out for whatever reason. Um, and the state is actually saying you can't opt out anymore. So, um, I think with the state saying that, it actually kind of puts parents to say, okay, let me, but you know, I'll have my child take the test and be part of it. So that way we can get an accurate read on what needs to be done, what needs to be, whatever it is. Did that help Annie? Christine? Oh, yeah.
So I'm gonna wait for, I'll have additional questions after we get to the Acadian's data.
Okay.
But I did want to ask upfront, if there is a consistency in the curriculum for math, K through twelve, as much as that can be. Um, you know, is there a spoken sequence of math curriculum instruction that we begin with in kindergarten and follow through?
I would say the answer to that is yes. Um, however, I will also be honest in saying that the, we've adopted programs to do that. We have not adopted anything in the middle school, and that's what we're having discussions about now. Is, uh, what does the middle school specifically need at this time? And it's not that they don't have anything. They just have built a lot of it on their own. So finding something that matches kind of what they've already built, that's hard to find, hard to answer.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Um, any others? If not, I'll forge ahead. Um, Smith, Lonely, Skyler. So the next slide is actually, we talked about Muia map growth. Now we're gonna talk about, um, Muia math, uh, excuse me, map achievement. So what is happening is that we're transitioning to our local benchmark map growth assessments. This chart displays the percentage of students performing at or above grade level in math this fall, um, for each grade K through ten. Um, results indicate that fifty-seven percent of students in the aggregate met typical fall expectations in math. Um, so when you're looking at this, again, this is from this fall now rather than the spring. So it's this fall's test. However, while achievement levels tend to be higher based on the fall Muia map growth outcomes versus spring twenty-one-three state test results, both assessments show quite similar trends in terms of how math proficiency progresses across grade levels. Specifically, on both measures, grade three starts with the highest rate of students demonstrating on-grade level performance or meeting expectations. However, a declining trajectory is seen on both assessments as students advance into the higher grade levels. Through the steepness of the decline differs somewhat with map growth showing less severe drops. The trend on both is notably downwards through middle school and high school grades. By middle school, proficiency achievement declines substantially on both tests. Outcomes flatten out a bit by high school with slight uptick. However, a sizable gap persists between upper grade achievement versus stronger third grade outcomes. In essence, while N W E A takes a slightly rosy picture, it confirms the concerning downward, uh, excuse me, direction for math achievements, also evidence in the state assessment results, demonstrating the need for extra math support through the progression of schooling. Trend lines might shift on the details, but the same overarching story, the need to reverse declining math trajectory from elementary to second, secondary grades. Sorry about that. Um, does that all make sense? So the good thing is they kind of match from spring to fall. Um, and there may be some regular detail that's a little bit different, but we're still facing basically the same, um, issue of the force applying as they go into the middle school and high school. And that's what we're trying to figure out, like, how do we fix that, um, going forward? And again, as Tyler had asked, um, it's, this is something that's happening across the state of Maine and actually the national end as well. So it's not something we're battling alone, um, but it's also something, you know, we have to take up the time to do things. We're not, certainly not satisfied with the result. Um, we want them to do better. All right. Moving on to the next slide, um, in reading, sixty-four percent of our R S U students scored at or above fall grade level norms on the adaptive map growth reading assessment. While more favorable than math, these results show over a third of students behind typical reading developmental expectations. Both the state outcomes and local map growth results demonstrate notably stronger overall performance in reading compared to math across the grade levels. Reading proficiency rates start reasonably high and remain relatively steady through middle school and high school grades. In essence, both point towards overall solid reading confidence to sustain better over time versus math. So again, we, our reading scores are better than the math scores. Um, and they are consistent from the fall through, um, last spring. All right, it's some more for you. We're not done. Um, so the next one, the, um, percentage of students meeting N W E A math growth rates. This chart shows the percentage of students who met their projected growth rates. From fall twenty-two to fall twenty-three, forty-six percent of our R S U thirty-eight students met their individual math growth projections in math, while fifty-two met expected reading growth, uh, excuse me, expected reading growth. Um, this indicates almost half of the students demonstrate a typical developmental progress in both subjects. So when you look at reviewing this, uh, across the multi-year math growth rates in the district, students have consistently met reading benchmarks at moderately higher rates than math. Trend analysis confirms reading has developed strength, but math outcomes are consistently, consistently lagging. There is a variability from year to year. Most recent years show more consistency with national norms with appropriate, approximately half of our R S U thirty-eight students making expected academic gains over a year as measured by the map growth targets. So when you see map growth, please, um, thinking in mind, we're still talking about N W E A testing, okay? Um. All right, I'm gonna pause there for a minute before we get into the Acadian. And then the last part of this is the Acadian, which will be a little bit new to you guys. But I think it's important that you know what's happening at the local level in the schools, um, what they're using to help guide instruction. So I'm gonna pause for just a sec. Any questions I can answer or questions I need to pass on to Karen? This is a lot of information you can give. So again, I really encourage you, look it over and then you can send an email with questions, um, because it does take a long time to process it when sharing all of it and like less than fifteen minutes. David, please. Yes. So I would say, yes, we obviously always want to be better than just the average. Um, so there's a lot of discussions that are happening, and it does take time to make decisions and/or self选择 certain programs, you know, that kind of thing. So that's all working progress that we need to feel and stuff like that. Um, so, but it's definitely, I feel very confident with where we're going at this time. And we just need to give it time. And we know that there's holes that we need to fill in, and we're not gonna make these gains in one year. The fact that over half of our students are showing growth, that's a very positive thing. As long as you can see students making growth, then I'm happy with that. Um, obviously, I'd like to be more than just fifty percent, but again, that's just what, uh, in the last couple of years, it's gotten very, very different. So it's gonna take time to recover from the learning loss that just thrown around the last few years. That, if you're such a new, that would be helpful, I guess.
I just want to make a comment about, um, attributing a lot of learning loss. Certainly COVID, there was a lot of learning loss when, um, students were out of school for very long periods of time. But this trend of not making progress in reading and math is a longstanding trend that is not isolated to R S U thirty-eight. It's across the country. Um, and these numbers look very similar before COVID to what they look like now. Um, so I just, I, anybody, I just say that, um, because I'm really reluctant for people to look at this and say, oh, well, you know, it's COVID. Now the kids are back in school. It won't be different. It's not true.
And that's a really good point, um, that Christine is making. Um, because before COVID hit, we were seeing class going over polling scores before the, the pandemic hit. That was something we saw coming. Obviously, the pandemic helped kind of bubble it closer to the surface for everyone, but it was a trend before the pandemic as well.
And if I could just say one more thing about that, um, so I'm, I'm so impressed with what the district has done for curriculum and being way ahead of this because that took planning that was going on before COVID was even a thing. Um, and so I think we're very well set up to make the progress that David and Christine were talking about. Um, but I, yeah, I, it's, it's a road.
Yeah, it very much is. Um, okay, so we'll jump into Acadian's system. You guys can get a little, um, info about Acadian's assessment system. Um, first of all, um, this year, we implemented Acadian's reading and math benchmarking system for universal screening and progress monitoring of foundational skills in grades K through five. So again, this is only for the elementary level at this time. Acadian is a research, excuse me, research-backed assessment tool, specifically focused on gauging the early literacy and math ability most predictive of future academic success. It works by measuring development in core areas like phonemic awareness, better, uh, excuse me, letter sound, decoding, vocabulary, fluency with connected text, and math computation. Results spotlight students at risk and pinpoint the precise precursor skills where additional reinforcement is needed. What sets Acadian's data apart is how easy and efficient it is to administer through one-minute individual assessment as, how, excuse me, as well as how clearly it could note the fundamental skill gaps requiring attention for young students to play on that developmental. A team of teachers has received training on giving and interpreting results. Moving ahead, Acadian will lend a fifty-three two R K five benchmarking approach while supplying teachers, teachers with detailed actionable data to plan targeted intervention and responsive instruction that meets all students at their current level of need. We piloted this last, last year in Maine elementary school, um, and their recommendations is what helped explain it to the other three schools. Um, so I just want you guys to know that we do a pilot with it, very successful. The wing teachers loved it, and that's why we moved forward with it, um, into the other elementary schools. So math, excuse me, math growth, um, evaluates overall mathematics proficiency across a wide array of skills applicable to real-world problems. Meanwhile, Acadian's math functions as a diagnostic test, isolating student mastery of the discrete quantifiable building block abilities needed to perform calculations and effectively solve such problems. Together, they provide complementary views into both overart and math competencies, development as well as specific, excuse me, yeah. Didn't come out. As well as specific consistency, elementary level skills serving as a critical foundation for broader math success. So again, two parts is the reading part and there's a math part, um, to this. And this is used within the classroom. It's not something that we use to compare across. It's to identify what students need what skills going forward. Okay, so Acadian's math, um, is the first, uh, chart that I've got up in the slide deck. The Acadian's math shows the percentage of K five students demonstrating proficiency specifically in math computation or fluency this fall. The highest rate of fluency benchmark. The highest rate reading, uh, fluency benchmark is forty-six percent in grades one and three. The lowest is twenty percent in fifth-grade computational skills. Across K degrees, around forty-two percent at or above benchmark expectations for foundational numeracy abilities abilities like numerical recognition, quantity identification, and calculation skills. Comparatively, N W E A's map growth fall, uh, fall assessment indicates considerably higher rates showing typical grade-level expectations in math around sixty-two percent scoring average or better across K-five. However, math, excuse me, math growth evaluates a broad range of math skills and conceptual understanding. While Acadian specifically, um, assesses math calculation accuracy and computation fluency. It focuses only on foundational numeracy abilities including skills like numeral recognition, uh, recognition, quantities, and basic facts, um, knowing basic facts automatically. This suggests that while about half to three-quarters of students successfully solve multi-step math problems to demonstrate skill, a significantly lower percentage in the same elementary grade suggests the underlying calculation and numeracy confidence needed to efficiently complete such problems. Uncovering this foundational gap to broke the gate to concentrate further on tightly-aligned interventions specifically from getting calculations fluency and after three started as early as kindergarten and from grade to drive broader long-term success. That's a lot. So, um, again, let me pause for just a second as you're processing. Any questions I can ask? All right. If there's not, then there's one student who is reading, just in case. The Acadian's reading data for fall twenty twenty-three shows the highest percentage meeting the benchmark is sixty percent in third grade, while the lowest is thirty-five in sixth grade. Less than half of students in grade K to are at or above the benchmark indicating risk for reading difficulty. Compared to the broader reading achievement standardized, uh, N E A and N W E A math scores, Acadian takes more specific picture of foundational reading skills. While math shows sixty-one percent of students' mean grade-level growth in K-five, Acadian's results reveal lower rates in students' efficiency are crucial indicators of future reading success like letter sound security and reading fluency. So think of Acadian, what we're doing is like that's really dancing individual level. And as we back out in math growth and math reading assessment, you get a broader and broader reading. So Acadian is to build on, get to the specific skills that a student needs and interventions they need. There, we back up, we're getting more of a broad perspective of that. So in summary, we have both areas of strength as well as gap to address for our latest assessment. Help them. The process we use with assessment results includes collective data guides, goal-setting, and responsive training to call students where they are and to tell their learning forward. Um, I welcome any feedback or questions and, uh, thank you on behalf of Dr. Smith. And again, I'm going to answer more questions, but I really encourage you to take, um, like, uh, reports that you have in study that have more detail in it, it'll be able to kind of change it. And please don't hesitate to leave out your questions because there is a lot here and there's a lot, we still have a lot of work to do, obviously. But it's not all room and duty, and I think that's the important thing, is we do have, um, a path forward. It's going to take a little bit of time. Not satisfied, I don't expect to be able to do this later, but we want to be better. David, please.
Uh, it's really good to see the progress and the plans to improve that. But this is more, I was very grateful from the student reports. We hear a lot of the other things that are being focused on, make them, defend them, support them, encourage them. And while I think I and everybody here want to do everything we can to support the scope that we're looking for involving about these, uh, evaluations. I am grateful and I emphasize my feeling of importance of it that we continue developing the whole children and evaluation, just like evaluation professionals. And you, we, we know that that's the number that we need to see for all such a good environment.
Thank you for saying that, David. It's really important to our staff moving forward with that whole cloud approach. It's not just about a score, piece of paper. We know we have to pay attention to that, but we know that stuff will end all the D L, all of the really good things that happen. So thank you for saying that, David, many times.
That's true. However, that's, that's true. Um, I just have a couple of questions about, um, and I'm, I want to air these questions because I want everybody on the board and in the community to know that I have these questions and that I'm going to be asking Karen about them or whomever. I mean, um, just because as a board member, I want to be fully informed, um, and because I have a professional interest too. I, I feel like I can be helpful, um, as a board member on committee boards, just to be knowledgeable about what's happening in the district. So, um, my first question is whether special services students are, um, tested in exactly the same manner as all general education students.
So, yeah, Ryan, if I'm to speak, please, um, so, um, they go through a process to determine what they can and can't do for testing, there may be accommodations. Um, if a student is exempted, they have a special test they have to take that is totally different from the, um, that they're talking about.
Yeah.
But they have to go through a whole I E P process to determine that. That's not something that's luck to win. You have to prove it. You have to go down.
So that I'm aware of for standardized testing, but I'm talking about the Acadian's testing specifically because I think that's a fantastic way to develop I E P goals and monitor growth for students with, um, especially designed instruction in reading and math.
I will have Karen give that to you because that can be considered a perfect.
Okay. Thanks. Um, I, and just, because I'm going to say this out loud, um, this report is fabulous. Filled with lots of very important information. It's really well presented and I think Karen and the faculty team and the administrative team have done a fantastic job. Um, I wish all districts in Maine were doing exactly what R S U forty-eight was doing. Um, and so the other question I'm going to be asking Karen is the status of the new curriculum adoption. Um, I know that there was a pilot of at least a created by curriculum. Do you know about that in particular or?
So what I do know about it is this is the, uh, the first initiative we will not do everything. But we have to let this go and do it so that everyone is doing, and some grades are doing a little more, but some grades are doing less. And the plan right now is next year, this full on board with it. So we need to just hear, there's activity, that's my development around, um, the whole curriculum. So, but I'll ask Karen to do the question if you can, Karen, if you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, and I will also be asking, um, and I don't know, Ryan, if you want to, you know, I'll, I'll pop you on the email. Um, so I'm just wondering if special services teachers will also have all of those curriculum materials available and the training available to them. Okay.
Absolutely. We're trying to include them every time we do it. And they have to.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, I just have one more question. I just want to, because sometimes when individuals ask the questions, it's just not everything gets shared with everyone. And I, it's so important, um, for all of us to know. So are there, um, how are the interventions? So based on the Acadian's data, there are interventions that are recommended or areas that have need that are identified. How are those intervention programs, um, chosen and who's implementing those in general? Is it interventionists or classroom teachers?
Yeah. So I'll ask Karen to get that. I don't want any, because I know that's enough to do this. And I don't want to say something that's really not true or excessive. So I ask more of Karen.
Thanks. And if any board members are interested in, um, the answers to the questions that I get, you can just email me and share, um, pop me on the email. Thank you.
And again, I just want to stress, as you have seen, there's been contact. If you have any questions, you can send them on to me or you can actually send them to me. It actually applies. So don't hesitate to do that. We also like to have a question. And thank you for putting up with my lack of English.
Thank you. All right. Now we move on to our one citizen comments. Along to addition, the trust, and see if there's any more.
I do have one. I'd like to make it, um, seven G, or excuse me, eight G, which would be a consideration of calendar change to make up for missed school days due to the slums. Um, so I'd like to have a discussion on that, um, as letter eight G. So before we do report, Sean, is it okay? I did say this in my report, but I'd like to say it publicly again. Um, I'd like to thank the drivers for, um, what they did on Monday, the eighteenth. Um, that was an incredibly stressful day. Um, I don't think anyone knew exactly what was going to happen. They literally were driving kids down roads with trees falling down and, um, power lines that were snapping in front of them. And they did an amazing job. Um, the kids were great through all of this as well. Um, the parents were great. I know there's, I don't think we could have timed it probably any worse than it really was. Um, so I just want to thank the drivers. Um, I was here at the high school for, uh, take students that they couldn't bring home. Um, and I helped the students get home, um, afterwards, but I saw their faces when they were coming in. And there, it was amazing that they were able to be as professional as they were and they controlled their buses, they controlled the students. And in the end, we got everyone home safely. So, um, I'd really like to thank, um, Kelly Thompson's crew, her entire driving crew for doing that because that was the worst I'd ever seen. Um, and I know how stressful it was if you just drove down seventeen and saw the, the poles leaning over the road down by the, the sawmill. You, you understood right away, like, this is not normal. So I do want to just, um, recognize them publicly, um, for, for the work they did. So, thank you, Sean.
No, it was, uh, definitely amazing work. Uh, I can see at school or six where drivers that back at school, it's just amazing. Such important, great work by all and the dog that doesn't know. All right. Anything when it comes to reports, questions? All right. We will go on some committee. Notice the meetings coming up. Other. Awesome Bear Society School, health advisor, parents.
All of those just happened. They was supposed to happen. I think it's going to be late off.
I just want to know if the Awesome Bear Society meeting, uh, six, third.
Great. Before we move on, I just wanted to add a couple of things. I was at a couple of basketball games. I just thought it was really cool to see the kids clean up their messes. And then I travel a lot for sports and see the kids take pride in their school. It was really cool. I'm here at the middle school for the world day and seeing the kids excited about their projects. Things that I know not everyone else can see, but the, it was, uh, I just thought those things were really neat. And seeing the pride that students have, I'd like to actually stop by. I, kids old school refill elementary and seeing some of the things going on there. We walk by. Just a lot of great things happening, but a lot of, I know when it comes to the kids, you're a lot of bad things usually or, you know, I just, there is one to say, it's pretty. Moving on to action information items. We will minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I know we have some minutes of December sixth. One, one minute.
I'm sorry.
Show hand, I'm used to it. And then we will, uh, okay, one minute, we will minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, freshman.
I know, yes, you approve the discussion board meeting for the biggest. Second.
All right. Then moving to second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion on there. Moves. All right. Does everyone else understand that they, they? We want to see acceptance of donations.
Second.
All right. And then move to second, discussion. I just want to second that. There, there's a lot of need out there, Eric, every day, to have people who are generous. All right. We will move on to the. To accept in some resignation effective immediately in middle school system.
Second.
And then move to second discussion.
Or, oh, sorry, the resignation letter is in your folder. You didn't see that.
Um, I just did have a question. What's the plan?
Uh, so short, short term, we have Mr. Greg Durgen, who is a former administrator who's helping, um, out at the middle school and has agreed to do it through the month of January. Um, and, um, we will advertise, I'm not sure, but I will be sitting down with Crystal Seroy's here, um, within the next day or two so that we can come up with a plan moving forward of what the next step is going to be. He definitely needs some more.
Approval of municipal lease purchase agreement twenty twenty-four should relate similar.
Second.
And then move to the second discussion.
I think I missed the lease purchase. I, I saw it.
So this is actually replacing Sean's drink water, the facility director, we have one person. It's actually going to replace that. That's at the end of the slide. It's a fact, it's a lot of miles on.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I don't know. You have to ask Sean. I know you got it about quite a bit.
Oh, no worries.
So just to clarify, this is the one fixed to Adam's garden day, right?
Yeah.
Okay, damn it. All right, and move on to consideration of high school course. Modern music and ensemble, intro to modern music, AP computer science, AP physics.
I'm looking for consideration of high school course portal, modern music and ensemble. Intro to modern music, AP computer science, and AP physics.
Second.
Michelle looks gracious enough to be here tonight. If you have any questions about the courses, she is more than willing. She actually has a slide that, that she, I think it's going to run through very quickly or, okay.
That would be, that would be great.
Oh, yeah, it is. Okay, Diane, okay. This header just shows you the dates of the meetings that came before this meeting. This has gone through departments, it's gone through curriculum committees, it's gone through our curriculum committee, leadership committee, it's gone through the board curriculum meeting. So lots of people have seen this and I'm just going to hit the highlights for you. Moving on, Diane, there's three. AP computer science A. Last year, if you'll remember, you approved new courses and they will eventually, you know, the whole, the goal of caring community of excellence is to ensure that everybody has opportunities and that everybody has opportunities that are driven both by need and by interest. And so having that extended opportunity is really good. And as a former math teacher, I can tell you there are math threads that the modern world provides that haven't always been here. With students who really excel at what I would call, you know, logic, which is really these days, computer programming. And so it does provide an opportunity to excel, it gives a boost for some students that haven't always had that success. So this is just, you know, the, it's one of the ways that we can help students continue to realize that success. We may not have enough students to fill it this year because we're still building, you know, that bulk of students. But we are working on some partnerships with some area schools. So students may be able to drive and join our AP courses and you may be able to drive and join theirs. You have to be creative when you have a small school. So I just, you know, I wanted to highlight for you that, that about that computer science class. There would not be any cost associated with that. AP physics. Currently we offer honors physics and this would basically be AP placement. The curriculum is so robust that we've done over time that we have more and more physics students, honors physics students asking to take the AP test because they're ready for it. So why not go ahead and get that sort of completion? So JP Spencer is our current teacher. He was trained, lots of did the training last summer from the college board. He's ready and he does use an online open source textbook at this time. So there's no additional staffing or costs. And again, we're looking to partner with area schools where they may offer one, more than AP class and we may offer another. Because while small schools up there. And last but not least, intro to modern music is the combination of intro to piano and intro to guitar into one course that provides opportunities to be flexible over time. It allows students within the course to choose piano or guitar. Or maybe there's an instructor at some point who offers other instrumental choices. So it just maximizes the power of that introductory course. And then we would have the staffing to provide an intermediate course, modern music ensemble. Basically, we take students' skills that they've learned as individuals and teach them how to work with a group, a small group of an ensemble size. It may be jazz band ensembles, they may be wind ensembles, there may be a vocal piece. It'll be interesting to see, but it's meant to build on, to provide a spoken sequence, to provide some room to grow as students. We take classes to use. And then last, I really just wanted to acknowledge that we have a mission and that that mission, that caring school community dedicated to excellence, it means something very different when you're talking about hot lunch or you're talking about after school extracurriculars. It means something in all of these contexts. But when you talk about curriculum, what it, it means most often for me is that we are looking to provide opportunities. That's part of the caring piece and opportunities to itself. So you want opportunities at all levels and they should meet those needs and interests. In small schools, that's be creative. And so that's what we are working on. I did include on the next slide a specific mission when it comes to supporting students. And I won't go into that. And then last but not least, the last slide, I always include in pictures. So there are other girls who are playing basketball last weekend. And we won 62 to 14. Thank you.
No questions?
Questions, I don't leave yet.
Yes.
Yeah, just one, that's, that's school rock, right?
That's right, it's school rock.
I don't know which I'm more excited about, the school rock, the computer science stuff that we really, really need, or super physics.
Yeah, yes, that's neat.
I have a question, so what courses are going to be?
So I feel like I, I don't, there's nothing set in stone, but I've been, I, we have a growing connection with the Lincoln School System, Monmouth School System, who go to Kathy and Tony. routinely I go for those meetings. So reaching out and getting a lot of positive response back from, from people in the area. So nothing set in stone yet. I hesitated to mention it, but I, I also felt it was important that you know that, I know that we can't offer the world. We just don't, you know, we're a small school. But together, maybe we can do something. We can do it with the world.
And if I can just echo what Michelle just said, the superintendent talking as well too. So that way we're all kind of in the loop on this. And I, I'm very hopeful right now that this is going to come to fruition and it'll be beneficial to the area. It's not just, you know, for Meranico, but it'll be beneficial to the area. But superiors are talking too, so it's worth it.
They sound great and they make me wish I were in high school again.
Thank you. You're welcome. More by, if you want to fly.
For the discussion of questions? All right, so now we will move on. What was it there?
Minutes.
Right, now our last item, consideration of calendar.
So what I'd like to do is walk through it, answer questions, and then if it's agreeable to everyone, I'll ask you guys to make the motion at the end. Or I'll go back and just think it depending on where the, where the board. So I put the memo together on the first page on the very back is the actual calendar so that you can kind of refer to what's going on here. So we basically lost the 19th, 20th, and 21st at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So we already had one snowstorm day. So right now, we're actually four days in the hole. On the other side, you'll see that we did get the two days waived in October. It's what happened and most of those days are waived already, so we don't have to worry about those. So we have, we have to make a calendar change. It's going to require a waiver. It means that the board has to approve it before I can submit the waiver. Then we get the waiver, then we can announce to everybody the changes. So that's why I'm doing this now, to get ahead of this, because I don't think we're done with the snow as much as I'd like to believe that. It's been very, and we're definitely going to be dealing with some snow events before the season is over. So what I'm proposing right now is we can take two early release days and extend them to full days. By doing that, we would, the state has approved these in the past where it can count as a date for the student. So take two early release days, bring them into full days. You get three, basically three and a half hours on each. That gives you six, seven hours, which is what we need to be able to have to be able to clean it up a day. So we only have two early release days left and that's January 24th and the eighth. So I would need to kind of make that decision now so that we can help things in place on the 24th. The other thing that I would like to do to make up another day would be March 15th is a teacher workshop day. It is dramatically student day. The teacher workshop day will then get moved to the end of the school year once we know what the date will be. Then we will move that workshop day for the teachers to the end of the year. So that would give us a chance to make up two days by doing that. We still have that third day hanging out. I would count that at the very end of the school year as one of those storm days. And hopefully, if we get any more storms, we can just use those two remote days that you guys had authorized me to use. It is a remote day. A little of that is a gamble because again, if it happens on a Monday, the storm happens on a Monday, there's not much I can do. If it happens during Tuesday and Friday, I can, we can have enough for, you know, to do that. So what I'm proposing that we do is turn up to half days and that workshop day. One of the reasons why I'm recommending this is the lesson that I learned last year, that the impact this has on families. And these are days for the most part that students are already in school. So it minimizes the time to the family. Instead of half days, students are here for a whole day. That student workshop day is not until March 15th that this family is plenty of time. It's during what would be considered a regular school week on a Friday. I'm not having to ask for after school time, which was very difficult considering this last year. We're looking at vacation, having new vacation times. So this seems like what we need to do in order to get ahead of this. I know the state is going through a process for emergency declarations and all that stuff. If that happens, then it gives some ability to have a little bit of flexibility and it can actually kind of adjust on the fly. But in order to be able to get these two days that we contend for, I need to do a kind of analysis to get the waiver. That's basically where I am. I hope that all makes sense. But one of the things I was really trying to be very cognizant of was that the family, we get the funding. That is sometimes events, you know, for child care. That's why I'm studying this.
What about April, giving us a book about day on, opening their half day, make up that half day.
That is actually a teacher comp paper, they're working on. Yeah, so that's what that is. We have used that in the past, it's not popular, but that would be a fallback if it doesn't work out.
What's the flex day?
A flex day is we actually have on our calendar, teachers, we have 175 student days. We actually have seven teacher days, workshop days. Two of those are the comp days, so that brings us down to five right away. You'll see there are four other days there. The flex day is they submit a form to their principal to verify that they're doing extra work outside of the regular school day to get the flex day. So they don't have to come to school on that flex day. They do workshops, webinars, whatever happens.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just to clarify, there is a chance though that the U E.
There is a chance, yes. Yeah, but I've heard nothing at this point and I'm just afraid to rate my law, so. There's actually, like, there's no cost because it doesn't affect, our food service would be working normally anyway. And our bus drivers would just be going on their regular time. So it actually is, it's going to be the normal run, there's no, I think. The only change would be the workshop day, but that would be used to the end of the day, so a lot, or the end of the year, a lot. Yeah, it's not going to be popular, but we always have to do it. But I know it won't be popular, but they're also understanding, you know, that people probably don't want to be going.
So we're in January 3rd, so. When is your, you know, to tell families this because we're too busy.
So.
Could go both ways with people being upset about it going.
I would put the waiver in on the fourth, which is tomorrow, if you guys approve it. I would put the waiver in on the fourth. I expect to know by the eighth and I would announce it by the tenth. As soon as I know, I would announce it. So that's, and everybody knows ahead of time. We publish a calendar with the updates.
And you can get the waivers.
Right, exactly, yes, exactly.
Questions?
Maybe it's a greater solution.
No, I didn't think we did.
I need to approve, that's approved, to do the calendar.
All right, and then motion second. Or any more discussion? Oh, I think this is a great solution. Hopefully we can get this out and maybe we get a waiver and we have a few days. All right, all for vote, what was in favor?
All right, I will keep you guys posted. I'll get the waiver in, I'll make sure you guys hear first, once I get the waiver and then I'll get those out.